Okay, so our next item is six B, Chief Elected Official Voting.
That's been taken care of.
This is all taken care of?
Yep. Unless the mayor wants to say anything about it.
You're okay with that?
No, I want to congratulate Counselor Drew for being official now. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, so we'll move on to the next item then and other business. Council Orientation Materials.
May I touch on that, Counselor?
Yes, please.
Um, all this was is, previous councils, remember when you became a counselor, you got this great big binder, weighed about 20 pounds, and you never looked at it for four years. So what we did this year is because you all, we all shared the OneDrive cloud account, when you open that up now, there is a folder in it, at least there should be in everyone's because we're all sharing the same account called Council Orientation Manual. And so we've just been, and in fact, I added two more things today to this. So it's going to be something we'll continue to add, basically reference material for you as a counselor. And it's going to change over time, but we put the committee dossiers, council policies, and then just a number of pieces, and I just wanted to draw your attention to a couple of them. Counselor Banbury, I recognize you don't have your device, but I can go over that with you a little later.
Neil, but you're a man, I really care.
So you can, you can see there's 25 documents in there, and...
But there is not on my tablet.
You have the Council Orientation folder?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, OneDrive is right there. Yeah, so let's go back here, and it's right there. That's everything.
You didn't put it in here with this, did you?
No, it's not in print, so it's on your electronic devices.
I can look at it any other time.
Yep.
No problem.
Um, and so you can just go through there, and we tried to put some helpful stuff. The one thing I was going to show you that I referred to, to Counselor Selk's question when we were doing budget is, number 17 on that is called Financial Indicator Graphs. Now, I expect the next ones to be out any time, but that'll give you some indication of where the town sits financially compared to other towns in the province. It's just an interesting set of graphs. It'll show you assessment per capita, and tax collection per capita, and cost per capita, what you pay for staffing per capita, and all kinds of things. So when you're not sleeping, or you need something to read, um, some of them are incredibly long, uh, some are just one-pagers. So like the Property Tax Rate Profile, that's just one page, shows you how the taxes broke down for the town from municipal affairs. Today, I added two documents, and their numbers 24 and 25 there, the Cuff Review Report. So when George came and did a governance review of the Town of Carson, that's his report that he gave back to the council. And then right after that is his Strategic Plan Report. So there's actually a governance section in there where everything we took from Cuff's report, and then when we did it, and what we did, and the follow-up and everything. So you can kind of look at what the previous council was working on, uh, for the last four years.
Yeah.
Jeff, I'm just wondering, because you just got an evaluation, and you have started to set goals, uh, from what our feedback was.
Yeah.
Is that something that you would be prepared to share with this new council? So I have a sense of where we're going.
I'll, uh, I'll bring that for the next one.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that you guys are aware of what I set based on the feedback, because of course, four of you weren't here. So that's, that's all I wanted to go over. Use that resource, it's, we'll, we'll kind of upload a few things we come across that might be helpful. Um, and like I said, all your council-related governance policies are there, all your committee dossiers, and, and it's there for you. The nice thing about having it in the cloud is that as things change or amend, we can update it, we can tweak it real easy. And if you're ever at a meeting, or you need a reference to something, then, then you've got a lot of stuff there. Okay? So that's what that was about.
Thank you.
Is there any questions about that? I'm happy to field those.
Okay, moving on to the next one.
Counselor Brown, I'd like to know when you're going to update the Town of Carson council members, since it's the old council still on.
Which one are you looking at?
Which is your counsel, Brown, didn't say anything?
That's fair. Pointed it out to me.
What was that?
Was that in the corporate handbook?
That was on the Town of Carson website.
Oh, on the website? Well, now that we start getting your pictures. By the way, next week, we want to do the group picture.
Okay.
So on the 14th, we'll do the, the group.
Yeah. That was interesting that George Cuff said at the meeting that we should get up there and display our council. And so people, you know, they're all up here, but I'm just wondering if there isn't a better place downstairs so that people can see.
We've been putting the current council in the office.
Yeah.
Is what we've been doing, so we've had the historical ones here, and then we put in the one of the day down in the office, but, yeah.
Because I walked into the county office for 42 years, and they display all our past councils up there, right, right, right in the foyer. You walk in, and you can go right down the, down the list, and it really looks nice.
And that's something we can talk about, too. Something we could talk about at the planning meeting, too. So the next item, uh, seven B, AUMA Resolutions. How many of you had a chance to read through those resolutions?
Great reading.
I read, I read them all, there was nothing that really tickled my fancy, but if there's anything that you'd like to discuss or talk about, because I, I think it's really neat, when we go to AUMA, we'll have the resolutions, uh, the opportunity to vote on, on many of these, well, all of these resolutions. And, um, when we get there, it's kind of interesting, they'll give us a little click thing with our pack, a clicker pad, and you'll get that, and you'll be able, it's electronic vote, and they'll show you how to use them, and they'll have some test runs and stuff like that, and they're pretty fun. But one thing I must stress, they cost $300 to you if you forget to give them back.
Do you know that from experience, Counselor?
Pardon me?
Do you know that from experience?
No, I do not know that from experience.
It's not $900.
I did like the Town of Taver's repeal of the cannabis act, I liked that idea.
The which one?
The Town of Taver.
Okay. You'd like to discuss it a little bit?
No, I just think they're on the right track. I'll use another.
Counselor Banbury?
What makes it nice is we try to sit at the same table, so, so when these resolutions come up, we can all just sort of mingle, and...
Counselor, uh, I recall the chairman today. Mr. Chairman. I really think that maybe, related to that cannabis issue, maybe if Jeff could give us a little bit of what the town has done in terms of bylaw regarding land use for this, because we have done something.
Yeah.
To protect the town.
Good. If I could, could I defer that? I just want to make sure I have it right.
Okay.
So I think, because I haven't looked at this for a while, we, um, created a zoning for any marijuana production or manufacturing. We don't have any land that's zoned that, but there is a zoning. But I prefer if I could check that and bring you the excerpt from the land use bylaw, if that's okay for in the future meeting.
Yeah, I think it would be a good...
If you agree with that meeting, that would be great.
It would be a good thing, so, because it's so current an issue, we should understand where we stand.
Yeah, got it.
Counselor Banbury?
Jeff, is there any way that you could load up our, the bylaws for the land use, development bylaw?
I can load you the whole land use bylaw in that reference folder if you'd like.
I think, I think that'd be great.
Yep, sounds good. In fact, you know, you bring up a good point. I'll make a point of loading all the statutory plans.
Yeah.
Municipal Development Plan, Land Use Bylaw, Area Structure Plans, all that stuff. And I'll make a point of putting that in that background folder we just looked at.
Okay.
And I'll email you when that's done.
There's a couple items that I thought were kind of of interest there. The one, the one was the emergency, I'm having a meeting, all the emergency services all, all together, it, I think would eliminate a lot of costs, for one thing. Um, and, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of that one myself, that, I don't know how you all feel about it, but that's one I, I am in favor of. And, um, the other one, okay, go ahead.
I was just wondering, all your, all that I saw, never mind.
Using the resolution.
Under the resolution, yeah. The other one was the...
If you could cite the resolution, uh, by its...
Oh, sure. That, that would be, um...
Two zero one B four.
B, B something?
B four.
Yeah, B four, B four, uh, the Town High River, on page 19.
Okay, speak to that very briefly.
I don't know if it's on here or you want to get out of it, but, pardon me?
I can speak to that very briefly, because I know you want to get out of it.
Go right ahead, please.
When I was on council, we were in the middle of that, when that was taken apart, where they split it up and gave emergency services separate from fire. And that, that didn't go well with the rural areas, but we hadn't full control over that. And we're suffering for it because of the now.
Yeah.
Our ambulance delays are, can be quite substantial, because our ambulances get called out, we might have to wait for one to come in from Pincher Creek. Prior to that, we had three ambulances every service to Town of Carson, and now we have to, I mean, if there's a trap, if there's a council, or if there's an ambulance call that transfers somebody to Lethbridge for whatever, that's gone, that's out of our system.
Yeah.
Then if we have a real emergency, we're waiting for Fort McCloud or Pincher Creek together, or McGrath, or whoever, yes.
Really doesn't make sense, does it?
No, that's something that, as a council, as a rural community, we really need to hammer them on that.
We had a little more of our control back.
Yeah, absolutely.
We discussed that. Yes, we did, yeah. And that's something that maybe you want to talk tomorrow at your, at your meeting, or on Thursday?
Yeah, I get there before, before the meeting.
Or Counselor Selk, if it comes up, if you're comfortable with discussing that, that would be good. Um, and the other one was, um, I thought it was kind of interesting talking about amalgamating the AUMA and the AA and the DC. So that was kind of an interesting one.
But those are special resolutions.
Under the special resolutions, yeah.
Yeah.
And if, I don't know how much, you know, if, if we vote, and they vote to go, how, is it a binding vote on this, to do that?
AUMAs are never binding.
No.
No, that's what I'm thinking, I think it would be, and they're used to going twice a year, and we go once a year, how would that affect, you know?
But, but also, Mr. Chairman, I think, if you get a chance to go Google Ontario, Provincial Ontario, and what's happened with their governments when they amalgamated, and it's just a schmushel, and Dennis will tell you this.
I don't know that this is the same thing.
Well, from, from what I understand, the counties are not very excited about that idea of an affirmation. That we feel is being forced upon them by AUMA, and that do not like the fact that there was no direct communication with them regarding that item. So where it will go, I don't know. And AUMA wanted this one to come this year because counties and towns and municipalities of any source are going to have to work together at the table for the integrated services. And I felt that that, if that was the case, will not start right at the top. So there, there are some good reasons why they felt it was an appropriate timing, and I believe so, too, but how the county will react, different story.
I think that this was started years ago, because counties got money and the towns don't.
Yes.
Some of these counties were sitting on millions upon millions upon millions of dollars, and the towns are already on a recreation facility, and the counties weren't taking it. I think this is where this whole discussion's coming from.
Yeah, and you're exactly right, and it also comes from the fact that very often the resolutions that are presented at AUMA, the same resolution are also presented at AMGNC. And so I felt, if we are presenting same resolution to the same body, two separate bodies, why not amalgamate the two? The resolution would be the same for all. Whatever, we shall see how it goes. I expect it to be a very heated debate, that one.
Well, I, I do, I, I think so, too. It's going to be interesting, because we, as AUMA members, they say, hey, yeah, this is a great idea, and, and the other side are going to say, no, they're going to be overwhelmingly against it, so we're still going to stay on it. So it's probably going to, you know, it may just stay status quo, who knows?
Yeah.
But it's, it is a discussion that should be held, so that we know.
Yeah.
I mean, anything else, has anybody who's looked at?
There was not really a lot of very strong resolution this time around. Uh, we didn't present any of this time around either.
So, um, just reading the other one, Resolution, on page 28, B nine, Commitment to Formal Municipal Consultation for the Future of Provincial Revenue Sharing. So it's kind of interesting there, there's a lot of people that are really concerned about MSI, and this is basically what this is all about. I mean, we can pass the resolution, but that still doesn't mean that the government's going to go out and say, yeah, you know, oh, man, we're, we're all for it, and yeah, for the next 10 years, we're going to give that exactly what you want. It's all about revenue. If the province is going to have to continue to borrow to pay us MSI, that's, uh, not a good situation to be in, you know? So what it really says, come back to, is our own individual communities. We have to plan for the future, and we have to look at that possibility, that if it goes, what do we do? And that's something that we should probably be discussing at our planning meeting, too. That should be on that agenda.
I found it really interesting that at our last meeting with George Cuff, he was saying, for your time, the landscape of the province will be very different, and many towns that are towns today won't exist. I'm thinking, very interesting, they're going to be absorbed into counties.
Well, I think there's going to be a wake-up call.
Well, there is no money around, there's some towns that are really in trouble, even today.
There's been a, over many years, there's been a feeling of, want, I want this, I want that, I want this building, I want that recreation facility, and this. It's boiled down to needs, and we're getting more and more in that realm of, what do we need?
Well, it's boiled down to, it boils down to efficiencies.
Yep.
Uh, the government can forever pay everybody to do the same thing here, and here, and here. If we can join hands together and work together, there'll be efficiency and hopefully a reduction in our expenses.
But that also means we'll be having to get up stuff, like, like water, for example. There's some...
Lots to work out. Counselor Banbury?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you and I both have been, have been asked to sit on some of these committees at AUMA, and maybe we suggest that before you accept something like that, you should come back to this council, because there's some costs involved in that. Is that my right, Mayor?
Uh, if you ever wanted to have your name stand and go through the election process, it is now recommended that before you put your name forward, that your name be approved by your council to allow you to put your name on the ballot.
Yeah.
Because there is a cost associated with that.
And you're going to have to pay them.
There are traveling costs and per diem.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's very important to realize that, anywhere we chair meetings, there are costs associated with it. So it has been traditional for us in past council that if we are going to chair a meeting, we let our name stand here at this table, get the approval for the budget funding. And it's fine, if you can represent a town by all means, I would encourage you to do that. But...
Because you want more meetings.
You also need to have it taken care here.
Well, while we're on that topic, Mayor, too, um, sometimes your committee that you're on has a conference, and it may be a very important one for you to attend, so you, you need to come to council as well, and present the reasons why you should go, and we will discuss it and then have a vote whether or not we're going to foot that expense that you can go. And most of the former council have gone to some of those meetings, and I've gone to FCM, and Counselor Payers gone to, to, what was that last one? You went to the FCSS? And then Counselor Barbers went to Economic Development, and...
You went to the library, Ray?
I went to the library, yeah, that's right, I went to the library up in Jasper. And so, yeah, so those kind of things, they are, they are important as part of your committee, so just be aware of that. Can't, we can't go to mall?
No.
Anyways, is there anything else under these resolutions that we need to discuss? And Jeff, do you want to kind of explain these extraordinary resolutions, just explain what they're about?
They seem to be simply just focused, I think, on the bylaws, the governance of the AUMA.
Yes, that's all what it is.
Really, the only change this year coming up is instead of saying cities, towns, villages, it's populations of these categories.
The municipalities.
Yeah. Ten to five hundred, under ten.
Just change the bylaws, that's all what it is.
Right. There's nothing objectionable there, I don't think.
Okay. No, I thought that was, I thought that was good. Um, okay, so then the itinerary.
Um, what I'm passing you out, because I didn't want to put it in the package, is your confirmation numbers for the hotel.
Okay.
So Monday night, you've all got your hotels, it's the Laser Main, it's right downtown next to the Tellis Convention Center. According to the hotel, you're better off to keep your car at the hotel than to put it in a public parking, so just let them take your car.
Well, Counselor Creed experienced some damage in that public parking.
Yeah, he had that, but just from a dollar perspective.
So they will charge a parking fee.
You'll pay a ton to keep it in an impark lot for 24 hours, or for, you know, four days straight.
They have, um, the, what do you call that, service, like valet service? It's just as easy to have them do that. They don't like you to go down into their parquet.
No.
And so...
I don't know if you have an option but to valet there.
Yeah.
Because parking's so tight, it's right downtown.
Yeah.
I'll be taking the town car, um, on the Monday night, or I can take a van, or we can figure it out, we all have each other's emails now, let's just start figuring out who's all going. I, I have no time, I need to be there Monday night. But you have electronically this sheet, if you want a paper one, I have some. All I did was at our planning session in the room and everything at the hotel. So what's going to happen for the Tuesday is, I guess when we go there, we get vouchers for breakfast at the Charcut Restaurant on site, so just have breakfast there. And then they're, they're bringing, or no, we have reservations for lunch at the, at the hotel restaurant. So that'll be how we'll take care of food on Tuesday during our planning session. And then the only other thing I wanted to ask is, traditionally, we've all gone to dinner, I would not recommend Tuesday night, but potentially Wednesday or Thursday night somewhere. Um, there's a couple of good restaurants right across the street, like the Salt Lick is right there, it's pretty reasonable, nice place. I didn't know if anyone already had made plans up there for, say, Wednesday night.
Why not Tuesday night?
Well, the only reason, and it's purely selfish, I have a CAO dinner at the, um, at the Fairmont.
Yeah, you do.
That night, so...
It's tough to say.
If you guys want a planning session after 5:30, you're doing it, you know? But Jill will be there, so she can take notes.
Thanks, Doc.
So that's the only reason.
I think Wednesday's probably the better.
I was pushing it, sometimes, well, there's always hospitality suites to go, you know, meet with people and get a little food, but we have, I think, usually Wednesday night with spouses if they're there, or if not, I was just, if anyone has one, they say, no way, or this is where we got to go. But looking downtown, you can get pricey in a hurry, so I was looking at a couple menus, and I looked, like, so the Salt Lick's right across the street, and it looks pretty reasonable, pretty nice, if anyone has an objection. Otherwise, I'll, I can do that.
Okay. It used to be they had a, like a gala night, they don't do that anymore?
Yes, I do have a gala night.
They do that.
Oh, when is that?
It's at the Town of Calgary.
The city of Calgary.
You have to pay and reserve for it, yeah.
You have to pay for it.
It's a ticket to the event.
It's about $70.
That's Wednesday night.
Wednesday night, yeah.
Yeah, there isn't in the evening unless you pay for the, the city one, if I recall.
So that's not one?
They'll always do your breakfast and lunch?
It's 30 to 9:00, City Calgary.
So our evenings are open, essentially?
Yeah.
So isn't that $70, it seems to me, I remember?
I think so.
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, I'll do a... We're going to do $70, let's go to the Dinner Theater, because it's 74 bucks, and that'd be even better, if that's...
Well, it depends, it depends what there is, okay?
Okay, well, I'll send you out some options via email.
Sixty minutes.
Our hotel is not so cheap, so I'm trying to keep our dinner to a reasonable amount.
Okay.
Okay, I'll send you options.
I'm just saying. Um, okay, so that's that. Um, now, recycling proposal?
One, one quick thing, especially for Counselor Drew and Brown, because you haven't been to one. Even though if we don't go out, say, Thursday night, we still cover your meal for that night, so you go eat somewhere and give me the bill.
You keep the bill.
Yeah, just put it on your credit card, give me the bill. So all your meals are covered for the whole duration.
We, we usually get together as a group anyways.
Yeah, we usually picked one night and all gone to dinner somewhere.
Pardon me?
Okay, I'll send you some options, thanks.
Well, Jeff and I talked about this 70, maybe the council may be thinking we should go in Cameron with this one.
Well, here's why I...
But if there's something that we can discuss, discuss other candidates.
I wanted to know if council would have a philosophical discussion first, and then see if we need to go over the details. So I've redacted the name and the financial numbers.
I noticed that.
On the forward-facing agenda. So it wasn't that you were just missing that. I, I redacted those numbers, and the reason is, is that if I were to, this was a proposal for an enhanced recycling contract, as you've seen. If council chose to go down this road, it would be appropriate that we put it out to bid, that we just don't take this one because it came across the table.
Absolutely.
If the numbers are in the agenda package, we've kind of compromised the bid process.
Correct.
Everybody knows the benchmark now.
Yes, absolutely.
But what I wanted to talk about, and, and I did the, I had a chance to meet with Kim and Cheryl Millward, since I put this out. So what you have is, you have a proposal to do curbside pickup, blue bag, blue box, whatever it might be, whatever the receptacle, the picking up is, probably just a blue bag or clear bag. And I think that that would enhance recycling in the community dramatically. And there's two ways you can look at it, you can do it on a subscription service, where everyone that wants a service pays so much a month to have it, or everybody pays, and if you use it or not, you pay. That's, there's two ways to go about it. The proposal was everybody pays. That was the proposal. Here's the problem. This is another great idea that the timings have bit off, so I went and talked to Kim and Cheryl, and I said, guys, what if somebody once a week was picking up curbside, and showing up at your building, and dumping out a trailer of unsorted recyclables in the middle of the building? They said, we can't deal with that. We don't have the manpower, the logistical operation set up to deal with having to now sort it all, garbage half of it, because most of it can't be recycled or shouldn't be in there, and then store that much even. So even if we had a 30% increase in recycling, we don't have a place to put bales of paper inside and covered, if all of a sudden we have 10 more of those a week, or we... So they were very concerned, saying, love the idea, we'd love to see that we get to that point, but we're lacking the core infrastructure to support a drastic increase in recyclables. And so that's why I wanted to just have a philosophical discussion. So regardless of how much this person is proposing, it may not matter, because if we're simply, if, if we want to continue to use the current contractor, and their resources are limited, then we either have a contractor problem, and I don't want to say problem because they're fantastic, we either have a contractor who can't handle those logistics, or we have one that can't handle logistics in their current building because they don't have the space or machinery to deal with it. Now we have a capital problem, or we have a combination of both. And so before we just say, hey, if it was this many dollars, we'd be all over it, we may simply be trucking blue bags out to the landfill because we can't process them, which is the worst possible scenario. Now you're paying for a service that you're not utilizing. Like, that, that's the worst case, is that, that's what happens. So I wanted to throw that out there, that I'd love to, I'm a recycler, my family recycles a lot, and I love it. I'd pay every month as a subscriber to have someone come to my house and pick it up, because I hate taking it, now I have kids old enough to do it, I don't do it as much anymore. I hate taking it, now I have kids old enough to do it, I don't do it as much anymore. But the problem is, we don't have, it's not an easy thing to do with the current infrastructure that we have. Saturday afternoons, the trailer's full, the wind blows at you up there, it's muddy. I know all those problems exist, we recycle. So the question is, do we focus first on the infrastructure? And we work with our association to maybe enhance the logistics of what they're doing, storage and processing and sorting, and we work into a curbside pickup where we can anticipate a huge percentage increase in recyclables, and therefore decreasing amount going to the landfill. But I'm not, I'm a little concerned after meeting with them that we're not set up or prepared to take that kind of volume. So that's why I wanted to throw out for a little discussion first.
Councilor Van Gogh?
I've watched the Lethridge recycling program go through the process. They set up three voluntary recycling sites, those things are busy all the time. Then they proposed a curbside pickup, and what's happening there is it's taxing the population, because they're getting two separate pickups, two different days, so the cost involved there, and I, they're really bucking the system down there. But that voluntary recycling areas, and that's costly too.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Um, like Jeff is saying, a recycler always have been and always will be. And having been on the authority, I really realize that our town is to do better. There's too much stuff going to the landfill that needs to be, needs to be addressed. That is always the question, do you want to have a regional recycling facility, or do we start with all-town recycling facility? There's two trends of thinking there. And if we were to go on a volunteer basis, what I need to understand is, if we were to resurrect the plan that we had proposed when we wrote the grants, which was enhancing the capacity of that building and a sorting facility, I'm wondering if with that in place as infrastructure, if, for example, there could be 100 families who would like to volunteer to be part of a project, would that be substantial, so substantial that they could not handle it? We don't know all that. But I'm thinking, if we were to start small and try to see what the capacity, then maybe we could go somewhere with the idea. But I am with you, let's start with enhancing the facility first, before we go there.
Counselor?
I realize surveys quite often are worth the paper to written on, but I'd like to have this. Survey the number of people in town that actually recycle. They're not getting my pot bottles, number one, because that's my allowance money. But I do take my newspapers down, I do take my cardboard out, and I also take my pot bottles. But what else would they be recycling?
Well, plastic bags, there's, the plastic bag closing, there's electronics, there's a lot more that we recycle in this town.
Actually, for what it's worth, clothing is our highest tonnage recyclable in the town every year.
Counselor Self?
Can't we just sum this up by saying philosophically, we all agree with recycling, but we have to figure out a way to do this logistically and then put this to bed and financially too.
My second part of that comment before I got cut out, except for, was that how much of this plastic and stuff is in our community? How much is, how much of it's coming from outside our community? Would this include the town of Muldas Lake? The use of the, of the dump is by a lot of different groups, not just our town. And a lot of the stuff is coming from outside the town.
One thing, if I might on that, there is this, while there's not, there's a financial liability in the town of processing a regional, a region's garbage, so our downtown dumpsters are just constantly filled by county and block tribe residents, for example, and there's a cost there. But the silver lining is, if we get regional recycling materials, our association gets a credit from the Solid Waste Authority for diverting that tonnage from the landfill.
That's right.
So there actually is a financial benefit for showing, we process this many tons of X.
Yeah.
And the Solid Waste Authority will give them money because of that diversion. So collecting regional recycling, while there's some logistical issues, does have a bit of financial upside for the association, not for the town per se.
Right.
But it's for the contractor, and our contract with them is, is very cheap, because they've got these other streams of income.
So my question here is, the question is recycling proposal debate for us. So essentially, like Counselor Self said, it's a yea or nay, do we support it, yes or no, is that correct? Is that, but the question is being taken to council is?
The question is, would I consider, if we want to go in Cameron, I give you the dollars of this contract, am I considering it in the budget first? And two, are we prepared to logistically handle the potential upswing? Now, our handicap association would say no on the second part, they're not going to speak to the first part, but they would say no on the second part.
Counselor Self?
Okay, there's just a couple other, I guess, comments. One is that I know that there is a building at the landfill that used to house dead and decomposing animals, are they still doing that, or is it just an empty space?
No, it's empty.
So there is a possibility that there is a building, we could do something.
It belongs to the county.
They're looking to resurrect that program?
Yes.
There is some work to try and get the, the, what do you call, animal?
Decomposition.
Decomposition program, they are trying to get that resurrected.
Yeah.
But I don't know where it's at.
But, so theoretically, there is.
Theoretically, there is, but it is totally under the county's jurisdiction.
Another item?
I had a conversation with a citizen in town that was actually very interesting, because she talked about a lot of things that I had never considered, like biochar, which is burning all of our wood into blackened charcoal that can be used in remedying land, or it can be, can be used for a lot of things, so. I think there's a lot of things that I'd like to take to the Chief Mountain Solid Waste Authority, and then see what the feeling is for the authority with some of these things, and then come back with a sense from them as well, the whole authority.
I appreciate Counselor Self's comments. One thing with the authority becoming a commission, there's been discussion about what is the role of the authority in every municipal, or the commission in every community now?
Right.
Is a commission going to take over curbside pickup?
Right.
Does that become a regional responsibility, where the commission owns five trucks, and they do pickup? Do they integrate into recycling, create a regional recycling center? So yeah, there's a lot of questions. Like I said, it's another great proposal, the timing's just tough.
Yeah.
It's tough.
Mayor?
I think Counselor Self, it'll be interesting to see the dynamic at the table, because I'm sure there is a certain amount of counselors that have changed there. And it'll be interesting to see if their desire, their model, which is transport garbage to the landfill, can move towards transport less garbage and have more recyclable goods, which last consult, I were not there yet. So we always were in this town as less become recyclers and proficient recyclers, but there are many on a county's, county's side that would say, we have plenty of hole where we can dump our garbage and fill it there. Anyway, have fun.
Okay, so where do we want to go with this discussion? Do we want to?
Can I just make a second?
Yeah.
Go right ahead. I think if we did a straw poll, we could just say, how many of you agree with recycling? And that we are a recycling community, and then we'll, and we'll do something with this.
Okay, go on the table, Counselor.
Bring back the burn barrels.
Nothing. Counselor Brown?
I fully support recycling, absolutely.
I do too.
Counselor Van Gogh?
I support recycling, but I'm not at a point to spend tax coverage, I need to develop the way at this point.
Okay. Mayor?
I support recycling, and I would hope that we find local solution, if not regional one.
Counselor Ju?
Yeah, I support recycling.
Counselor Self?
Yeah, I support recycling and finding ways and means that aren't going to be taxing one of the taxpayers.
I feel the same way.
Despite my flippan remark, I feel the same way as those guys.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll move this into a discussion in camera, or?
Well, if you don't need to, I think we're good. I'll talk to the proponent.
Okay.
And let them know that, you know, there might be a time coming in the next couple of years where we can entertain a more aggressive pickup, and we want them to get involved at that time.
Yeah.
I'm just not hearing that maybe that, I don't know that we can accommodate it now, but if I'm not hearing that right, please let me know.
I also think it's important that we keep, the company right now that does our garbage does a phenomenal job, and so they need to be kept in the loop as to what council's thinking, just so it's not a surprise to them that, oh, all of a sudden they're deciding to look into recycling, maybe I should have had a five-year plan on that or something, so.
Okay. I think I echo what the mayor said, the facility has to be kind of the first priority before we can move on with this type of a program, so, so that's a discussion we're going to need to have about what we do to get that facility, and we've got that on for our planning session to talk about that, so. Okay, so next item on here is the town Christmas party, you've all got your invitations?
Yep.
So I guess we need to know, our angel will need to know by the 17th of November, that's coming up pretty quick.
Can we just tell you now?
Tell me right now, and I'll tell her.
Absolutely, yeah.
Two of us. Two of us.
Two.
The angel's already got mine.
Oh, okay.
I think she's got mine.
She's got mine too.
Counselor Ju?
I would, we, I'm pretty sure two of us, but yeah, I haven't had a chance to really tell them.
Zuby's put herself in, by the way.
Perfect.
You do the floor show. And Jill will help me, she'll like me. All right, well, that's good.
And gee, it's cute, it's for BMW.
Next item, Counselor Self, you wanted to talk about multipurpose facility?
Right. During the time prior to the election, I had a lot of conversations with people about different things in town. One of the things that I had discussed with some people was the possibility of a multi-use, multipurpose recreational facility in a town that would have an indoor walking track for seniors and possibly a basketball, whatever court that could be used by the residents of the community for various things, seniors and youth. Well, it seems that this has kind of got some traction amongst different organizations or different individuals in town. They've also incorporated into a discussion that they want to look at a new football field, and so they're proposing a meeting on November the 16th at the high school. And I received an invitation to go, I think, Counselor Court and also Counselor Brown. And since this does fall under Counselor Brown's purve, it would be most beneficial if you were there, but.
I can't, it's my anniversary, so.
All right.
So we'll have to be there.
So I think it would be who was to go and hear what these individuals have in mind. I mean, I wanted to put it out there because I had been throwing this idea around prior to the election.
And they said what time at the high school?
Eight o'clock.
I am talking to the Levitt seniors that night, every member state thinks, so I won't be able to get there.
November 16th, then?
What, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll be curious to know if this group has contacted administration regarding something that might involve hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And since we have budget process that should be initiated here, I am wondering, where are we going here?
I talked to Mr. Clark this morning. He's scheduled to come present to council on November 28th with what they are proposing. So his conversation was, he asked me, what is the, you know, we need to engage the town now, we've just been some citizens with a common interest, and how do we get the town engaged? And so I recommended to them the model we use for the college committee, where I said, come to council, present what you're up to, and then ask for a representative to come and meet with you that can report back to the council on a frequent basis. And so the town's one of the, obviously, we're the biggest stakeholder of the project, we'll be responsible for the bulk of the capital and the ongoing operations. So Mr. Clark is preparing a presentation to come present to you on the 28th. I don't know much about the meeting the week before, I simply don't know.
I think he's just looking for various.
Ideas.
Ideas and groups that might be interested in this. I mean, Mayor, I will tell you, like, this was my idea, so.
No, it's all right, Counselor, I just wondering.
Okay, I have ideas, isn't it?
Oh, absolutely. I love you to have idea, I just try to understand how we all get on the same page with the same information.
That's why.
Because it sound like one, two, three of you got invited to that meeting, and I'm thinking, wait a minute, we are at council here.
Well, can I answer that?
Sure.
It was an idea, that's where it started, and I didn't realize that this group was going to take this idea and run with it, which is what they're doing, which is.
Perfect.
What citizens should do.
Yes.
And having said that, I was just notified about the meeting recently, that's why I brought it up now, so that now you all know, so that none of us are keeping this under the table or in our pocket, it's public knowledge now, so that's why I brought it forward.
I had a visit with Mr. Clark, he contacted my, my home some time ago, and he said, what if we were able to get a group of people, we could do some fundraising, what if it didn't cost the town money, that they just provided land? And I said, that's an interesting idea, and, well, I'd like to hear what they have to say. I really would like to, I'll plan trying to go to that meeting myself.
In my, in my conversations with Lloyd and a couple other people, I've always emphasized strongly that it's got to go back to council before any decision.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that, and that's what, this is more or less an information meeting.
Yeah, it's got to start somewhere.
Well, and, can I?
Yeah, go right ahead.
When he called, I got the phone call today, so I, I got the phone call today and was asked if I could go. I told him I would not, because it's my 26th year anniversary, and.
Just a kid.
Thanks, guys. Anyway, I just said I wouldn't be able to come, but I look forward to hearing from you. He told me, he talked to Jeff, and he talked to you guys, and he was coming to council, so I just said, I'm happy to listen to you when you bring it to council, that's essentially where I'm at.
Whatever we do, whoever goes to that meeting, you're non-committal, it's the testing ear.
But it all starts, it all starts with a dream, right? We were told we couldn't have a soccer field, we jumped through hoops, we did all we could, it's all about starting with the dream, but there is an order of doing things, and I respect that, for sure. Yeah.
It's the same, tomorrow Gary and I are going to the Pole Haven Interest Group, the word on is observers, I believe.
When is that?
Tomorrow, 9?
9.
We are on the agenda to make a presentation.
We are.
Which will be. I'll make that, I'll make a presentation. Basically, it's, we're looking at this from an economic development.
From a tourism.
Tourism, and also it's historical, we've always been able to have access to the council.
But again, nothing gets done about the approval of the council, we're all aware of that.
We'll win vote.
We speak for the council, so we don't speak for the council.
Okay. Anything else to add to that before we move on?
Well, I'll work with Mr. Clark, I told him I'd work with him to get things ready to come on the 28th, and I sent him the presentation to council policy, actually, he emailed me at 7:06 and 7:27, some stuff already, so he's, he's working on it as we speak.
Good, okay. So no further questions, next item on here is correspondence, you've all had an opportunity to look at some of those. There are, is there some information up there, if somebody is seeking a nomination? If you are, let us know, so we can talk about it. Otherwise, we'll move on from that. And there's just some other information from Statistics Canada.
Can I just ask a question?
You bet, go right ahead.
So if I read that information, our last census, there's 3,585 people?
Correct.
Okay.
But we have the feeling there is probably a good 150 missing there.
Right.
If not more.
Right, exactly.
Counselor Self, I think you and I sat on the, the council when we ordered a census states in '06 or '07, I think, when we did that last, it was very much over the federal census.
So what are we going to, what are we going to do with this information? Is it FYI, or?
That's what we have to make a decision.
Okay, the next thing, the local government managers, what's on first base is a seminar, it costs 300 bucks per delegate to, to register, if there's anybody interested, I guess, to.
Oh, it's for Jeff.
Elected officials are invited as well, that's why I put it on here, elected officials are invited.
Yeah.
But I'm not suggesting it's a must-go, I just, I threw it out there because they're invited.
I think we've got a lot on our plate right now with AUMA and other things.
Jeff, you planning on attending this?
I'm on the fence, actually, I'm not sure yet.
Do you need a motion from this council, if you decide?
No, no, yes, my.
Okay.